Well, what? So, what, three months?
Fifteen weeks.
Fifteen months to get the board.
There'll be four other trucks waiting for the same part.
Oh, boy. What happened?
Transmission. Bell body. Can't hear the shifting.
What year is that?
Seventeen.
Why is it eighteen tomorrow? It will shift tomorrow. Like, if I start it up, it's one hundred and fifty more years.
Eight more hours. You watch. It'll be eight more hours.
Uh-huh.
Every time it shifts, eight more hours.
Yeah.
I don't think there's a problem with that. They did that out pretty well.
Well, I don't know. That takes you fully, man, to report one bit. It shifts in four blocks too.
See, they changed that in two thousand fourteen. And then they changed it in two thousand sixteen.
Which one's yours?
Five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call for February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, very thick.
Here.
Donna Morrison, Don Gableson.
Yep.
Mike Delphos.
Here.
Joe Adam. Paul Speed.
Here.
We're calling.
All right, everybody. Everybody get their minutes from last month reviewing? Any changes?
I'm not saying changes.
Make motion to approve the minutes as presented. Make the next motion to approve the minutes. Anybody second it?
I'll second it.
All seconds and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Michelle, is that?
Thank you.
Public comment.
Thank you for the privilege to be here. And I'm sorry I wasn't here in the last meeting.
Okay. Old business.
Rick usually sticks that in with engineering.
Yeah, I mean, I have engineering. Do you have anything under engineering?
No.
He doesn't come, he doesn't work.
I didn't get an email.
Maybe Eric coming now.
I would thank you for a lower bill. I didn't use the water for a whole week. Mine was frozen. And thank you for sending your personnel up to help me and look things over. Thank you for this privilege, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. You must thank you.
You're up. We're waiting on you. You're up.
Wait, who's up? Come back up.
I think she's turned seventy. You can't be late. That's not an excuse.
Oh, wait, she's here.
Yeah, it's our cat.
Nice.
Sit over here. All right. Well, I can't sit. That's too close. Bob, I'm down.
Pretty cool stuff, too.
Yes, it is. I didn't have Gavin Bee or I wouldn't be here. I'm getting tired sitting in the house.
I thought that mattered.
I got nothing from Joel.
I didn't either.
Am I under?
No.
Hi, Dawn.
Hello.
How are you? Cold?
You want me to tell you truth or not? Yeah, I'm cold.
Yeah.
You don't like it. Not at all.
So, you got nothing from Joel? You got me hanging on to old business?
Do you want to... No, I don't want to be in the engineering report. I guess what we can talk about is Jeff, Eddie, and myself. We met in the main sure on preliminary tank site for the new water tank for the new water plant. It will... We looked up at the old tank. Well, I guess it's old tank. It's the one we're using now. So, it would be off to the right of the existing tank right now. Up the hill a little. Up the hill a little, yeah. What'd they say about a ten psi pressure increase? And Brian is concerned about the pressure throughout our system. In some areas, we're, you know, pretty high. We have everything under, you know, pressure reducers and that, so we're good there. But he just wanted... He called today this week and he'll be coming back up and to survey, you know, the system, so. As far as the wastewater, he brought up some preliminary plans for the sewage plant. And we've been looking at over as we get a chance and talking about different things with the plant and that.
Are we rolling the deck?
That's what I'm saying. That's what he brought up. That's what he brought up, yeah. Yeah. So, there's some issues there that we have to work through. But we can have more on that at the next meeting and that, so. Because it was just a, you know, preliminary meeting. And then we got...
You know when it was going back?
No. And we did talk about going to existing plants that would be similar to ours. So, I can let the board know and be welcome to come along if you so desire.
I'd like to review a couple of plants and see how...
You're not invited.
You're walking. I'd like to take a drive.
Okay. No, I'll let you know. We'll let you know. Drawings for the Vamber project on Crossroads Boulevard. I haven't really... The only thing that we've looked at is the vault. Pressure re... Yeah, it's not a pressure-reducing vault. It is a metering vault. So, we've looked at it. Right at the old township.
Oh, okay. I guess I'm there.
Yeah, so we can direct the flow up Evergreen or we can direct the flow out Crossroads Boulevard.
Yeah.
Any other questions on what you just heard?
Was there any talk about, like, the line they're going to put in?
No.
In the direction of the order?
I would imagine... I would assume that it's going to be bid both ways. On the wastewater side, anything that was added into that was pump stations. We told them that... We told Brian that we wanted Blaine City, South Coldport, and Loudville pump station included in this project. Now, what will happen is it'll be like an add-on and it'll be a separate bid for that. So, at that time, if we decide not to do it with the project, we won't have to.
Or they can examine them or something. Let us know.
Yeah. Yeah, in fact, they've already sent in the PAV call.
Is that fire?
And they're... He said something about the possibility of, what, February or March? Maybe having a sewer project and I think the water project wrapped up that we can go bid.
Okay.
Next.
Next. Twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get there.
Well, the only thing that's on the...
Once you bid the project.
Not doing that.
Yeah, it'll be better.
Way back here.
And then once you, you know, we'll send the application into DEP and to Penn Vest. And then once we bid it and see what the project costs are, that's when Penn Vest will say, okay, this is what you're getting. And that, but you... They won't have any idea until that comes out.
I guess it doesn't stand.
Yeah.
Does a new water line... Is it in a loop manner that it can go both ways? I mean, the whole system, is it a loop?
Well, there's some areas of every systems that's not looped. And that's, you know, part of our system also. So, not everything can be looped. A water line, for example, in Loudville, once it gets to, you know, the top of the hill there at St. Lawrence, we're out of customers. So, there's no place to bring it back to.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Michelle.
Under your cash balance tab, I put a little note here explaining a little bit. You know, like I said, when we're pulling money from the line of credit, it ends up looking a little bit worse than it actually is. So, I kind of made a little correction there. So, on the sewage side for operating revenue, we had forty-nine thousand, three thirty-two nineteen. Total expenses were high, but like I said, majority of that is the sewer project. So, they committed a hundred ninety-three thousand, eight twenty-eight eighty-six. After some interest there at the bottom, if you take out the monies we pulled from the line of credit, we have a net income of five thousand, five hundred dollars, eighty-nine cents. Waterside, thirty-nine thousand, one twenty-two sixteen in operating revenue. Total expenses are thirty-two thousand, six thirty-five thirty-three. Some interest there at the bottom. We have net income of six thousand, five twenty-eight seventy-one. Overall, net income of eight thousand, eight eighty-one ninety-three. The second page would be the bills to be paid. So, these are pretty normal there on the front page. Quarterly insurance, Cintas versus our uniforms. Second page. We talked last month there about the new computers. We got that paid for. There's a third page this time, but there was four or three cycles in January. So, that's why it's a little bit more than normal. Pretty standard, really. The next page is our employee hours, comp time that's available.
I see a bit of units.
Yeah. I had it down. Yeah, getting it down a little bit, yeah. Under your cash balance tab is everything through...
No, I thought it was two steps.
Under your cash balance tab is everything through the end of January. And then, well, we did get, under your correspondence, we did have a letter from the township with the reappearance. And then under your miscellaneous tab is our tag list, which is a lot smaller than normal for... Especially for this time of year. It's only one page this time, which is pretty good. But some have paid since this was copied. Actually, the second one is paid in full and then fifth one down is paid in full. And that's not much. I think there was some payments on the other ones, but they have to catch up before the ten days is up to pay the balance, so.
That's eight people.
Left?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's eight left out of...
Thirteen.
On thirteen, but out of...
Seven or... Yeah.
Almost a... On wastewater, almost a thousand customers.
So, it's getting better.
Then runs from a two.
Yeah. That's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
Michelle, what's the tank fee?
Forty-five. Yeah.
Okay. There's your water report. Sixty-six percent accounted for. You can look the numbers over there. It's self-explanatory. And on the back side is your... We're reading. Quite a difference.
Yeah.
Quite a difference.
Do you have a total usage?
I don't know. Yeah. Pardon me?
Do you have a total usage for the month?
Uh, yeah, three million.
Thank you.
New ball?
Pardon me?
New ball?
Uh, yeah. Oh, yeah, there was... And just Eddie. Yeah.
Was Jeff... Jeff got in the call?
He had that, well, I don't know. He did a meter when he was on call that weekend. So, he... Oh, he had a grinder up here.
Yeah, the call after grinder up here. And I think best thing to do is see what the home owners...
Yeah. Yeah, it's really bad.
And... I don't think I ever... I haven't owned it, but I don't have where I want it.
He bought the homers too.
Not this month. Jeff bought this one.
I thought it was two.
The Hyvys?
The Hyvys? Anyway, we had multiple properties. There was one in Loudville, the home trailers. There was four different properties we were doing. Sky was...
To be...
Yeah, it was actually for those in his basement. I had to show it off. For those in his basement. Peter Lee, Peter Lee wrote on the road that the fitting was just cracked. Issues with the generator to play. We can hear that from the poke and all that. I tried calling him earlier today and just spoke to...
Was there a issue?
The door, yeah.
Yeah.
How was the payment?
Oh, there was a leak at that home's... Home's...
That's one of the two on the road.
Yeah.
We've got trouble with that.
I looked at that connection. Possibly the customer tested it. I can't...
Little bit stuck.
No, there's a little house back there.
That's a long way.
Seven hundred. Yeah, we're still waiting on... I'm still waiting on pricing back from Kirk. We got a pricing back from L B, so we're swinging on that.
Our line on the same side of the road as that?
Correct.
It's cross the button.
That's on that side. He knows a little bit about that. Well, the moms, the one north of it. The white house and the white... They just bought it.
Yeah, he's doing spear digging.
Okay, I have a... I don't know if this letter... Did you send this letter out to me or not? On the...
We had set a price for the fine.
Okay. Been working on this for several months. We finally got it over there. We need to make a decision. I didn't think the time to read it over.
Very... Right in the next one there explains it very well.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think we should... We're going to charge it for that.
Well, that's what we have to decide. I want to summarize the letter first.
Yeah.
Soon as everyone's had a chance to read it.
Oh, I'm a big fan.
Very fast reader.
Of course, we talked about this point here too, so that's amazing.
Yeah.
We know I've been here forever. It's day one. I don't know if you're a fan.
Okay, the letter is concerning our several issues here. But starting off, it's our inflow and infiltration. And then part of that is, one of the main things is salt pumps that's tied into the sewer system, floor drains, dam sprouts. The letter goes on to say that we need all homeowners to make sure that their inspection viewports are readily available for our employees to examine as we will be... We're going to go out and do inspections on our viewports and salt pumps and to see if we can narrow down where majority of our inflow infiltration is coming from. We'll also be doing manhole inspections and taking care of fixing anything that we find there. The other item is what the wastewater system is supposed to be used for. Some of the, or favorite items that we're finding is what they call flushable wipes, cotton balls, diapers, paper towels, cat litter, pieces of clothing. The baby wipes and the disinfectant wipes are also called the flushable wipes. They're not biodegradable. They cause a lot of problems with the pumps getting jammed up in the pumps. And this is very costly. Those pumps that we have in our pump station, just probably on an average are about fifteen, twenty thousand dollars per pump. So, we need to watch what's moving, what people are trying to flush. I think that summarized the letter. Does anyone have any questions or comments concerning that? I think that summarized the letter, does anyone have any questions or comments concerning that? No questions? Uh, one of the things that's in here is, again, we had talked about, uh, a, uh, problem, uh, on the sump pumps and, uh, and that, uh, so is there any type of monetary fine that, uh, that you want to address, uh, that's also in the letter? Uh, that's, that's, that's up to the board there. Just, okay, want to deal with that part of the letter? We need something. Now, I know if you want to move off to review this one more month and have it ready to send out. Or if you want to try to make a decision yet.
And all of them is.
We all have to make a decision and give it one of those.
With people.
This is February, like, March is not.
All of our customers are paying for it at this point.
Yep.
And it shouldn't happen. That's why I think we need something, you know, I'm not saying how much, we need something.
Agree.
What is the fine for?
Pardon me?
What is the fine for?
For the illegal connections.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Right. Did you check what the selectors, if you could put in the mouth, come in?
In your roles and rights, okay. Did I check? No.
Have you got any ideas?
Yeah, a little piece.
What's that?
Beta O P.
Make it work tomorrow. Make, make it work, make it work tomorrow.
Yeah, well, that's, uh, into expansion.
Now, you're talking about sump pumps or illegal stuff, you know?
Yeah, sump pumps or like down spouts. Everything, everything that's in the letter. Yeah.
Okay, so the wipes and stuff is included?
Yeah. Yeah, if it tends.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, if it tends. You know, the water, you can possibly see the wipes. Depending if there are any ground or not, that's. Yeah, that's, you'll be able to tell that. But if it's in the pump station pumps, you, you know, not going to be able to tell.
Fifty dollar? What do they do any places? How much do they charge any places?
Yeah, I throw. That I don't know.
I'm throwing it out there, I'm going to say, uh, you just did.
Oh, what did you say?
Fifty. She said fifty.
Fifty, that's right, fifty.
What's our rate, Mike?
First sewage, fifty, we're going fifty-six.
Let me just make it to sewage, sewage rate, that way if the rate goes up, he goes with it. That's just my idea, I'm throwing it out there. Make motion?
I don't think it's up to an ownership.
Did you make a motion on a fifty or?
I didn't wear my hearing aid.
Well, I'm wearing mine, I still can't hear, so.
He said you do want to make a motion on that fifty, yes.
You're making a motion on fifty dollar? All makes motion on fifty dollar fine.
Is that per month or occurrence?
Per occurrence.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I second that?
I'll shake it.
Make seconds to motion, fifty dollars per occurrence. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
I'm sorry, who's that?
Mike.
And we're going to send these letters out to all the sewage customers.
Okay. I got mine.
You got yours? You'll be getting another one.
Probably.
So that's all I have for right now. Uh, back on to Joel.
Yeah, where we got one, um. Chap. Bills and stuff, yeah.
Oh, yeah, let's, uh, need a motion to, uh, accept the manager's reports and pay the bills.
I make that motion after you're done.
Mark makes a motion to pay the bills and accept the manager's reports as presented.
Second.
Go on a seconds to motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Did you have?
Yeah.
Okay, um, chapter ninety-four annual waste load management report is complete in draft. Uh, if you want to review that, Rick, I need a signature on that, uh, we'll sign it, we'll take it back, get it submitted, um, we'll wait, we'll, we'll sign it, approve it, you know, if you're ready to review. Make sure there's nothing in there, uh, I reviewed it.
Yeah, let me look through them. And, uh, let me get this to you.
Okay, that's fine, uh, as soon as we get that, uh, that's due at the end of March, so if you'd like to get them in, you know, we know by the twenty or thirty it'll be, as we like to, done if we have them, so, um, that's ready to go whenever it gets signed. Then, uh, the L S A grant was submitted for Glen Hope, which you probably already know. Uh, so that's, uh, should be released in September, if C F A goes into the schedule, um, a lot of time, you guys, uh, should know, a lot of times they kick that can down, or they don't always award when they're supposed to, so, um, if they do, um, you can find out about that in September. Bamber, uh, the construction grant was approved, um, I don't know, I think you guys approved the contracts, I don't know Michelle, if you got any contract back yet from, from the state.
Did you guys get your emails?
I didn't get an email, I didn't get that.
Yeah, I don't think anything's been officially sent to them.
Okay, so you guys, we maybe didn't sign them, uh, trying to get it, I'll check for that.
I know, I didn't get anything.
Is it twenty, fifty, twenty, wait for it, never, I kept telling you not getting anything.
I talked to Joel after that and he said they weren't ready to send them yet.
Oh, you know what, yeah, that, that's correct, so, um, moving back up, so what happened there is, we provided them the information, um, Eric and Dawn, who's at Secretories, so that went in, um, we have to submit task sheets and all kind of paperwork, uh, for, um, each of the project items, so, just like we did for the first time when Molly was, uh, sort of in charge of that project, there's a different analyst that's, that's doing the construction and is not Molly anymore, um, I think his name is Sean. We submitted the same thing we submitted on the design as construction, so I think because there's a different person, they wanted a different way for whatever reason, so, they didn't like the way we submitted it, and, which was exactly the way we submitted it the first time, though. They want to see something different, so we revised those, sent them back in, um, and haven't heard anything back yet, so as soon as they, it's in their hands, as soon as they approve that, then it'll be the emails to approve the, um, the, the rational track. So, in the meantime, we did get approval for the additional funding for easements, um, I don't know if, you know, there's a headway there, if we just get involved with that, or.
Did, uh, did the attorney send the easements down yet?
Uh, no, she, she was going to drop them off and then she decided to send them off.
Okay, but we haven't dropped them?
No, not yet.
Okay, easement, so we have some time on those, um, just work through that while the grants sort of, while the construction grant is being, um, executed and approved, so.
I'll call her and more.
Okay, um, so that's moving along. Um, I don't know that I ever got the E S A supplement to add the Almond's tank, you know, we were talking about adding the tank in there, um, I did have copies of those, if you.
Who did that?
You may have did, done that and signed it, I don't know that I have a copy of it yet.
Did they, will size yet, or am I going to wait until they do the study up there?
Uh, we have to wait till they do the study. But we had talked about, we talked about one fifty, didn't we? Yeah, yeah, so we don't know how far we're going this way or how far we're going that way, so.
Do you have a copy of this? Okay, all right, um, we incorporate that in the design, you know, we're going to figure all that out, yeah, um, that'll lead me into, uh.
So you need.
I don't have a signed copy, so if you have that somewhere, if you just want to sign that.
Please, please sign it.
Sign it, uh, we just need a, uh, a copy. And, um.
Saying it's going to be overnight, so.
We dropped off plans, I believe, last week, Rick, the, for the sewer plan, preliminary design for the wastewater treatment plant grades, um, Brian said he will incorporate, the comments you already had, he will incorporate those, and then we sit down to actually meet, um, the, we'll have the five school, she was raising a lot of things like you talked about.
Okay.
It's the word I got, so, um, once you guys look at them, whenever you're ready to sit down and review them, we get, we're ready to do that, so, um, we've been pushing the wastewater plant a lot harder than the water plant, only because at best right now, we're seeing, um, a lot more sizable grants coming out of sewer, sewer and water, different bucks of money, so we're seeing a lot of the, um, higher grand dollars coming out of the sewer project, so we're trying to push to get those permits again, so we can get a Penn Vest app in on the sewer. And for you guys, what that means is that it's a higher dollar project too, so, um, we probably get that in the sewer, but we're really trying to get the sewer in and get a Penn Vest app, maybe we get an offer, um, so the water plant is, it's lagging, I mean, not that we're not working on it, just lagging behind a little bit, just with us trying to get, uh, put a rush on the sewer project to get that in, you know, I think the quicker we get that in, the more likely that we'll see a more attractive funding rent to loan ratio, um, I, I believe. Um, hopefully that's the case, we can get it in and get it offered, so.
You can try to set a date or something, we, we're listening, is that ready? For the sewer pads for us to review or?
Well, you have to get it ready.
Oh, just so bad, just need more plumbing area.
Um, no, whenever you guys are ready, we're, we're pretty much ready, uh, because sewer, sewer drawings, uh, so whenever you're ready to.
That's what I'm saying, if you get a chance, get a date set up, and then we'll try to, I'd like to be here, I'd like to work.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I, I want to see, uh, what we already talked about in, in the plans before we meet.
Oh, I, all right, so you've got some things you want to.
Yeah, I want to tweak.
Yeah, well, and, uh, I talked to Jeff, uh, about dumpster, and he said it's from the, uh, stuff.
Okay.
You know, probably, you, wondering, Joel, do they, do they make, uh, aluminum or stainless for any dumpsters for, for our place?
Uh, I'm sure they do, I don't know if they're like cost of fees or whatever.
I was thinking it's something you might want to consider, because that dumpster you have, isn't that looking?
I would definitely think it's probably plus ten years.
I was thinking something, but. I didn't think of that, because I, I, I haven't been here that long.
Pretty, I just figured, plus, I don't know, I mean, I've been, it was three years since I started, I was messing with it, it had to be at least four years, five years to put on.
So.
You're, you're probably.
Yeah, I was guessing the same.
Yeah.
Because we had door windows for quite a few years last, I started.
Three old ones.
Oh, yeah, he said he had to weld the door. You know, I'm, the door on the, we had to do some welding.
Because it was broke or?
No, it was rusted.
Rusted, rusted.
Yeah, and that's why I'm thinking we need to think about this, it'd be a little more costly, I'm sure, than the home room, I'd say.
Yeah, we could get a little, what's the fine for?
Look into that, I don't know that it's real common, if this, you know, we think about, you know, they'll take years or, you know, I think, I'd write, I don't know, for the cost of stainless, you probably get ten or twelve for the cost of stainless, well, I guess, you know.
Well, man, that could be, I don't know.
Stainless is better than that. So, I don't know, my point is, I, I'm not sure.
Not as poor, maybe, you know, do you know what I mean? I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know.
The old dumpsters, they used to use a machine out there on the ground, so they'd dig it out, I don't know, I don't think they have to do it, because they'd dig it out and dump it very well. I thought maybe that's all the damage in the recording, now, I ain't know it.
Some of them floors are quite bad.
We can look into it, we can look into it.
Yeah, and, and maybe I'm way over my head on it, but it don't hurt to check it out.
We had that one built down, sunny too.
Oh, you said that, go.
Rick, do you want me to talk about the pump stations and all, the sewer pump stations, or does that, I think, that's something we didn't.
I broke down, okay, we're going to discuss it.
All right.
We met, and I told him, we met with Brian on, on the wastewater side and on the, on the water side, on the water tank, so we're, we're up to speed on that.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I know.
Okay.
What's your question?
Any questions, Rick?
All right.
Rick, we'll jump back in again, then. Um, do business, even toy.
It ended in December, there was a little fluctuation with all the items that was on, out on stock, you know, nothing major, I mean, pretty much, you know, basically the same for the last two years, so, in order to actually go through it, you'd have to go through what Eddie was putting out, but it must be all good, putting back in, you know, the, the stand, stay in the block.
I appreciate you taking care of that.
We figured, I figured, I know, Joanna talked about, but every six months, just kind of, you know, I just said that, but it's been holding true.
That's usually what we reorder what we use.
Yeah.
And that, even if we've got five or six of them.
Right.
The way it is.
Like, you ran into that, that one?
Yeah.
It was, what, six months?
Yeah.
Like, we got the parts.
Yeah. On that H D P, uh, the only thing that we'll have to give is different saddle.
They made them, I didn't know if they made them or not.
Didn't they? Yeah, so, it's just a, it's a different saddle than a C nine, but it's very similar, I would say.
Uh, sewage camera.
Uh, on this, uh, when we're doing this, I and I, uh, one of the things that we ran into years ago, whenever we, uh, went around, and I guess I shouldn't say years ago, it's just a couple of years ago that, that we've done, looked at viewports and that, trying to find the customer's viewport at the property line. Uh, that's probably at least half of them, we can't find, because they've been buried and that, so, uh, Jeff came up with the idea of a, uh, another sewage camera with a locator on it, and we can do one of two things with that, and I think that's an excellent idea, I think it'll really help. Uh, we can go down their viewport up at the house, go down that way, and, or we can go hop from manhole to manhole, and, uh, see about trying to locate, you know, because we'll have the camera, we can, you know, as you, as you're pushing it down the main, you'll be able to see the, uh, the flow coming in, or, or at least the line, the connection. So, we stop there and use a locator to walk on top of the ground to, to find the location. So, we stop there, and we use a locator to walk on top of the ground to, to find the location. Uh, right around a thousand dollars. And that, that's, uh, that's with a three-hundred-foot cable. He can get a small, yeah, he can get a smaller, yeah.
That's pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he can get a smaller, he can get a shorter cable, but for the price difference, it wasn't good with the three hundred, that's going to be hard to push, you know, three hundred, you're not going to push three hundred feet, but, you know, we can always flow the string and, you know, pull it through if we have to.
That's it?
I'm looking at the motion, we get it, I'll look at it.
On the next motion, purchase a sewage camera?
Suck.
With locator? Do you want a seconds the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Word? Anything else on our new business? All right, if we don't have any else, we're gonna have an executive session, some personnel stuff, and we're gonna get out of here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Jerry.
Here's your ring.
Big one.
Big one.